Village Board meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Deputy Clerk Linda Muller.
My pledge is to the land of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, please.
Nagowski?
Here.
Stapleton?
Here.
Fergilio?
Here.
Blattern?
Yes.
President?
Miklos?
Here.
Next on the agenda is a consent agenda which consists of approval of minutes for January 27th, 2014 Village Board. January 27th, 2014, command the whole minutes, approval of disbursements, second motion approved.
So.
Made by trustee Choldekas.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Miklos. Any questions, comments? With none, roll call.
Nagowski?
Yes.
Dickton?
Yes.
Fergilio?
Yes.
Blattern?
Yes.
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 Motion approved. Next would be the mayor's report. Few items that I wanted to go through quickly here. Again, the State of the Village address will be held on Wednesday, March 5th at Crystal Garden Banquets. Contact Chamber of Commerce for more information on that. Also, the Polish people of Lamont will hold their 10th Annual Polish Heritage Day this Sunday at St. Cervos. Trustee Miklos will be presenting at that event. And then also, the Lithuanian-American community of Lamont will be celebrating their 96th Independence Day this Sunday at the Lithuanian World Center, and trustee Choldekas will be presenting at that event. So, anybody that's part of those communities, or if not, well, both of them are great. Celebrations, food's great, the people are phenomenal, you get to see a lot of their heritage. So, we look forward to celebrating with them and congratulating them on their day as. Real quick, I want to update a few things back and forth through the efforts of a lot of people in town. We have secured all the salt that we believe we will need for this year. Pending a February that was like January, but that was like December. For the most part, we believe that we've got all the salt that we're gonna need. And excellent job to Ralph and everybody at Public Works for that. Tom Ballard and some of the trustees are called that have relationships with some of the different quarries and such to be able to make sure that Lamont has enough salt. So, again, that, I also want to commend, again, this Village Board meeting. Police Department for being out on the streets first. When it does start to snow, they're the first eyes on the streets as far as when the conditions start to deteriorate. And then also, Public Works for their tremendous effort in dealing with this winter. We're now the third snowiest winter in Chicago Land history. We all know that based upon the piles. We're doing a great job now pushing the piles up into the yards, onto different common areas. Providing sight, and then hopefully we can repay for winters to start to die down here in the Midwest. But they're working almost around the clock right now. They're on top of it when we have water main breaks, the extreme cold that we've experienced. There's some areas in town that are slated for water redos as it is. The water lines are gonna be a part of our capital program, to be redoing those water lines. And their staff, and it's just showing some fatigue, where the fatigue is, we already know where it's at. But they had to cap one line five different times just based upon the pressure. And again, it's like, I know where we're going in the springtime, but in 20 below weather, it doesn't make any fun up there dealing with water. So, I want to thank Ralph and all the guys and gals on Republic Works for a great job, a job well done. And it is kind of funny how you go from, you know, being the most liked division out there to when people see the snowplow come by now, they're like, I can't stand the, you know, people push the snowman, I'll wait one more time. So, I know you gotta be waiting for spring to come, so hey, they've cut the grass today, so.
Can I ask? One other thing is Public Works is out there pushing stuff back. I know there was a nixle that went out today. If everyone who has a hydrant in their front yard could spend five minutes digging it out. I know you've got enough to shovel driveway sidewalks, but it would help tremendously. I know as I drove down, I saw a couple that were, I'm assuming in the middle of Acorn Street, correct? But, um, but nowhere to be found. So, if somebody, you know, people go out there and help Public Works, Fire Department, whoever, it takes a minute to shovel your own hydrant. And who knows, you might need it one day, so, thanks.
Thank you, Cliff. Very important public notice. Two real quick things also I want to bring up. When we talked about, at last meeting, when I was talking about revenues in regards to the video gaming machines. And just to give you some background of where we're at. Like I mentioned, we have nine locations that have machines in town. And December was right at 1.2, little, almost 1.3 million dollars. Everybody else that has put in for licenses have received them now. As a side note, Lockport has nine locations, they did almost 1.9 million. Romeoville has six locations, and they're about 1.3 million as well. So, it is truly amazing how much money are being put in these machines on a monthly basis and the revenue. And that's truly where the governor is gonna get his money right now for capital projects, I see coming up. Just been a little tidbit as far as what we deal with as far as elected officials on a monthly basis and when Springfield's in session. As of right now, wow, with this session of state legislature going on right now, there's been 9,000 new pieces of legislation put in to be looked at and go through committee. So, as those pieces of legislations go through, you know, there are lots of times, there are ghost bills, there are bills that are trying to sidetrack any bills back and forth. But every once in a while, not every once in a while, every year is the same thing. If we're not watching all 9,000 of those and people helping us watch those 9,000, legislators put, legislators put in different items that could take away our municipal money. There's safe harbor, there's just no way to balance our budgets. And they're looking for ways to be able to balance their budget, and they're gonna do it on the backs of municipalities and a lot of other individuals throughout the state. So, it's just one more item that we need to be very diligent on. We're dealing with our state and local legislators that when we see a bill that comes up that is not conducive to local governments, that we say on top of them and say that it would hurt the people of their constituency. So, just a side note. With that, my update as far as on, like I mentioned before, as far as on anything regarding the sports complex. Two quick things, based upon questions that were at last meeting. Legal has reviewed the answers on them, and they will be posted tomorrow. And I have had a, one of the things that has transpired that's new is I have had a conversation with the architectural firm, and the architectural firm has been leading with an outside environmental engineering group that works closely with MWRD. So, as of that, that's all that's new in regards to sports complexes. So, with that, I will open it up for audience participation, for items, and that will go to the court's report. Anybody that wants to speak in regards to any items? If so, I need to really try to keep them to three minutes if possible due to us having, starting to work on our budget and our committee meetings happening this evening.
Rick Lighthart, 356th Street, Lamont. I'm presuming that the board saw the article in the Chicago Tribune. Did you guys see the article in the Chicago Tribune?
Yes.
You didn't see the article, the full front page article in the Tribune, Paul?
No, that's not.
You didn't see that? Our group has received many calls from around the nation, in particular from Libertyville and Bridgeview. And we understand, Mayor, we can't stop you from doing what you're doing, we know that. We can't stop you. You have the legal right to do it, you can borrow the funds, you're in control. But everything we've heard from Libertyville and Bridgeview people and Chicago people, this is gonna lose. You will lose on this, this is not gonna make it. My sore disappointment is that in five or 10 years, you will all be gone, you will not be here. You will be in Florida retired, and the next mayor and the next taxpayers are gonna have to pick up this mess. If you don't believe that, call the mayor of Libertyville. Call the people of Libertyville. I got a call from a guy, he's a millionaire. He says, Rick, he says, you can't believe this, he said, I can pay the taxes. I pay $800 a year just for a library, and even though I have millions, it's just a crime, a thievery, that I cannot stop my village. And then they built this sports complex, 10 years ago, I tried to stop it, I couldn't stop it, Rick. He said, how can I help you guys? Because it is not gonna make it. I understand, you guys have done your studies, you've done it. I think you've done it with a guy from over in Romeoville who built their sports complex, and he's the same guy who's advised you on this one, he's gonna manage that one. So, I just see a lot of stuff here. We did look over all the FOIAs, we read everything on the FOIAs you sent us. We're not dumb people, we have good people on our committees, smart people, these people who, these are not, these are really smart people who can look at some of these issues. You're going down the wrong path on this. Your kids and your grandkids are gonna pay for this, it's not gonna make it. I would encourage you to just say this, that you confess and say, after further review, we are united and have decided to discontinue the pursuit of this sports complex. It's hard for you because you're down this road already, and you're gonna look like you have egg on your face if you pull back. I get that, I completely get that, I mean, it's hard to confess that, okay, we probably messed this up. On the other hand, I know in your hearts, you probably really believe this is gonna be great for Lamont. You probably really believe that it's gonna be great, I believe you believe that. But there's 700 people that don't believe that who signed the signature. And we're gonna try to get the whole village to get in touch with you and say, please don't go forward with this. So, we know we can't stop you, we know you've got the legal right to do it, we can't stop you because that's the way the courts work, that's the way lawyers work, that's the way it is, we get that. The only thing we do is try to convince you, convince you to change your hearts and maybe show you that you're just gonna mess up on this. But in 10 years, when I'm dead and gone, or passed out, and your kids are gonna be around, that's what I'm concerned about. And I just feel horrible that you're doing this.
On a personal note, I hope you're here more than 10 years, Rick. I mean, I don't know, I mean, 10 years is not that long now, although you're still a young guy. That's, that's, that's old, that's old towel, I remember nights, so. And then that, anybody else?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Janet Hughes, I'm a taxpayer and resident of Lamont. And I have with me a copy of the Chicago Tribune article that appeared last Friday. For those residents that did not get a chance to read the newspaper itself, the story is available online. I have a letter that I'm going to be giving to the board, and what I'm going to do tonight is read the letter. Dear Mr. Mayor and trustees of the board, January 28th, 2013, Lamont Village Board approved ordinance O-10-13 for the purpose of financing a Lamont Sports Complex. The following question and answer subsequently followed and appears online. Question: Is the public able to reject the project? The answer given is this: If there is enough support against the project, yes. In response to that ordinance, on February 27th, 2013, more than double the signatures needed were submitted and accepted by Deputy Clerk Linda Muller. Almost one year later, the board repealed that ordinance. According to the village website, the petitions submitted are filed and stored in Villatalk. I find this answer unacceptable, or demonstrates the disrespect to all who signed the petitions. Pursuit of the board's complex continue now with the term "private financing." Yet, in the answer given to my recent Freedom of Information request, the identity of any private investor was not named. Friday, January 31st, 2014, Chicago Tribune's front page news reported, quote, "They won't vote, but won't get it." Congratulations to our village board for the story. According to the article, quote, "The Lamont Sports Complex is turning into a case study of how local officials can easily find ways around putting big projects to a vote before taking on big debts." Lamont Mission Statement reads, "The village of Lamont is dedicated to promoting and preserving the character of the community and ensuring a high quality of life through professional public service provided in a friendly, consistent, and fiscally responsible manner, emphasizing the best interest of the community as a whole." This board has failed to follow its own mission statement. The Lamont Sports Complex should be immediately dropped. Tonight's meeting shows on page 33 of the proposed capital improvement program
One minute.
The spending of $150,000 for sports complex study updates. It is wrong, irresponsible, and un-American for this board to spend one more penny of hard-earned taxpayer dollars on a project questioned by its people and bypassed by the voters. Again, this board is putting our town at great risk of becoming financially insolvent. In another FOIA response, the proposed sports complex financing outline dated December 9th, 2013 shows two debt schedules. One with alternate source revenue bonds, the 2014 series, and another showing debt certificates.
I'm gonna dash this down.
What exactly is the village board's plan now?
It's gonna be four minutes, so.
There's my question, what is the village board's plan now? So, I'm giving you a copy of the letter. And I hope you will respond in a timely fashion, I'll be looking forward to your response, thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Kevin Cliff, 3 West 1. Good evening, everybody. Actually, my first question is, can I ask questions?
Again, one of those things, Kevin, I can, I'll do my best, it's just, you know, time domain, it's just fine.
I just don't know how the format all works here exactly, but. I guess the one question I have is, does this field have to be cleaned regardless of what happens?
No.
No, it's MWRD's property, so if there's no sports, if there's no, if there's nothing that goes on the facility, then no.
Okay, I was just curious, is it a super fund site or something like that?
Super fund, the super fund site is always, is dried up, there's no remnant of the super fund site, not on the federal side.
Okay, then I was just wondering what the advantage is for the taxpayers to, if we go to a private financing on this issue instead of bonds being issued? And I don't see what the advantage would be for us if we had a higher interest rate on different series bonds to issue. Then I was also looking at the, you know, if you put a $21 million building on this property, if the Metropolitan Water District wants to terminate that contract with the one-year time period they have, if you're able to get fair market value for whatever we put onto that property.
Well, one of the things that I wanted, I want to make sure that your one question had answered. I have, we have a letter from MWRD that states that they will, that there is no, Jeff, do you want to answer this? This is the best way to do it, for sure.
Thank you. MWRD has responded to us with a letter stating that they have.
This was a year, this was, I'm sorry, Jeff, this was a year ago, so we had this at the beginning of when we see, when we know what their contract is gonna be.
That they foresee no corporate use of this property for the next 49 or 50 years. Reason that's important, the reason why that provision is in the lease is in order for us, the village of Lamont, or any other government to get that property, it has to be used for recreational use all the way through. And has to have that clause in there by statute. MWRD has essentially done all they can to assure us that it's, they will not need it for the corporate purpose for the next 49 years. And they gave us an example of, put a few other.
They have that, 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 yeah.
Okay, then, thank you. And then the other thing was regarding their contract or leasing arrangement. It did say something that, I better read it here, I need to read it. Private ownership or private, or property interest in this project may bar the lease from happening. It said, may bar from happening. So, I don't know if it goes into, those are the terms I read in, it said, private ownership or property interest may bar the lease from happening. So, I don't know if that has anything to do with how the financing occurs in this, but I just thought I'd bring that to light. And then.
I could email you the page of the FOIA that I saw there, I don't know if you like.
And then the last thing I just wanted to bring up again was a referendum. And I looked, there were maybe three that I saw within the past, like 2001, they did a 10 million for the open land over there.
In the country, that's right.
And that was a $10 million one, and then a couple small ones for 16 or 24 million, et cetera. So, I just wondered if there was a threshold that you felt would be, you know, where you would deem it a good time to have a referendum, or, or, you know, I just don't see the resistance to, you know, having it really go out to the public, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I like you, Rick, I'll let you go again, fine.
You know, I, I.
Go, go, so everybody can see it, go, go, go.
I guess, I guess. Are you guys going ahead with this?
I don't know, I, I, I have 100%, I have 100% transparency. Until I know, it all comes down to what we talked about and what I mentioned before. MWRD, from the time we started to the time we're at right now, there's one engineer left on there that was there, you know, that's a senior engineer now, okay? So, everything we worked on and everything we did beforehand has changed, okay? The way that, you know, people, it just happened to be one of those times that people swat, you know, just happened. So, what the requirements were there before are different now. On this piece of property, it doesn't make sense, okay? If you've got eight inches of topsoil, this is just one, if you have eight inches of topsoil, and they say you gotta bring in permeable papers for the parking lot, okay, for water drainage. So, you're gonna bring in C6 stone, okay, so that's what you compact your driveway on first, okay? And then you lay block on top of it, and you fill it in with little block, with a little small stone around it. When it rains, that water's gonna shoot on that and gonna sheet fed off the property quicker with no type of remediation for what we know what people are looking for for stormwater management right now, okay? It's gonna hit, sheet fed, oof, you go right to the channel. It's not gonna trap anything, there's not gonna be bio swells, there's not gonna be, there's nothing that makes sense regarding that, okay? And it's an astronomical number to put 400 cars on a bricklayer parking lot. Doesn't make any sense.
So, it's possible you guys could say, we're not gonna do that, is that possible?
There is a, I say there's a, it's 50/50, Rick.
Okay.
Okay? Because if the numbers don't make sense, the numbers don't make sense. I'm already dealing with 90 basis points different in the bonds.
Yeah.
Okay, so I got 90 points I've gotta, we gotta deal with as a village board anyways, just based upon the, on the money, okay? If you have all these other costs that have escalated, I know the concrete, I know steel is up because commercial buildings are up in Illinois as far as in, you know, the concrete tilts. I can go back and forth as far as on, you know, Romeoville. Romeoville's already ended because of how built they are, okay? Jeff DeBolsky from the.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was concerned about.
You know, Jeff bought that building, McCook bought that building for $18 million.
Yeah.
Okay? They bought it because the gentleman that had it, when he got his property tax bill, the property tax wasn't there, okay? I talked to Mayor Libertyville, he called me after you read, after you read, he goes, you know something, Mayor?
What'd he say?
You're not gonna like my answer. He said, it wasn't him that did it, it was a mayor 10 years ago. He goes, but if I had the same numbers, I would have done the same thing. He goes, the difference is, they don't have a park district, okay? So, there was, there is some money that's based upon the common good of providing recreation for their, for their citizens. They have two bonds. One for 20 million, one for 5 million. 5 million is for the land, 20 for the building. If you take the land out of the deal, it makes money. We don't have land on yet, Dave.
Yeah.
Okay? There's lots of things back and forth, we all talk about Bridgeview. Bridgeview is a one, single-source item for an outdoor summer team to come and play there. Nothing else comes, there's, you know, there's some costs back and forth. I don't disagree, I think the citizens of Bridgeview got a, got a raw deal. It's not, it was, it's not present, it was presented differently than what they got. I don't disagree.
Yeah.
You know? I don't disagree with Mr. Cliff about government owning, you know, getting in the, you know, having government get bigger. I don't disagree. But if I don't have to pay for the land, I don't have to pay property taxes, I keep kids. And here's one of the bigger things I haven't even mentioned, you know, they keep talking about. You know, the chief come to me, and we've had a lot of other chiefs and other people around the United States and around Illinois. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta hear our problems.
Yeah.
You know? If you have organized sports, and you keep these kids and give them places to play, organized sports to do, it may be saving some kids' life as far as making sure that we have programs, not only through park districts and, and, you know, villages. There's a common goal and a common core there. We've had kids at Lamont High School die from heroin overdose. You know, I don't, I haven't gotten where I'm at in life, I'm making stupid decisions. Have I made some? Absolutely, everybody in this room has. But I also have six people that sit on both sides of me that help make those decisions, along with great people in staff, great people that, you know, that do numbers back and forth. That's why I don't, I don't, you know, I've never taken 100% of what the revenue numbers are. I've never taken the lowest number as far as on the expenses. I've never taken those two numbers as a baseline to see if this thing makes sense or not. I've always taken the revenues and taken them down 25%, and taken the expenses and raised them 25%. And still, on top of that, we still have to have a 1.25, so we have to show 25% more revenue as a reserve to make sure things make sense. So, now, in theory, I have a 50% backer as far as on my revenue numbers. I've had, you know, I had a lot of people call on the, you know, the mayor of Libertyville, call me and, you know, want to go through it.
I know he did.
Great guy, know the mayor well.
Yeah.
Totally, you know, it's different on that because they had to pay for the land.
And they're trying to sell it now, is that right?
Nah, it's, they're, they're, they've, no, no, it's refinancing. It's refinancing, so they're, they're working it through. But again, they don't have a park district, so there's, there's some community good that they're trying to work on.
Hey.
There's lots of things, there's lots of things that go through that are going, but again, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't know yet. You know, I mean, I, Mayor DeBolsky was also, Cook, Cook, I appreciate DeBolsky. His daughter had to play volleyball, I was with him all day Saturday at, you know, at an event back and forth. You should call him. Probably not get a hold of him, well, he's, he's a little tough to get a hold of, but his, their village administrator will can tell you how beneficial Max is and how well it is. Romeo Field is gonna pull up after, after the season's on here coming up, as soon as spring starts, they're pulling up all of the indoor fields and bringing in hardcorese. Because they're gonna take on the international. Because they're gonna take on the international high school basketball. 283 teams that travel just in the Illinois area of competitive basketball. They may, I mean, it's, the thing's not even finished, and they're already gonna make changes to be able to accommodate more people coming in. They're as good with the bed, you know, I, I know I'm not gonna convince everybody.
Yeah.
I gotta be convinced myself, yeah. So as we go through the process, I'm gonna be as transparent as humanly possible, understanding that it's a business decision, okay? It's no different than I said, anytime from when I was a trustee to mayor, to everything I've done here. I run it, and I run it as a business. This lady who's our finance director right now can tell you what type of shape the Village of Lamont is. We don't have a AA2 rated, you know, bond rating on this town for having crappy finances. You know, I'm not gonna jeopardize it. It's, you know, it's gotta be right. But as we go through and as we're working on the State of the Village address, we used to be at $2 million in sales tax revenue in this town. The bond dropped off, we dropped down to about 1.4, 1.5. We're about 1.6 for the last four years. We've stagnated. There's nothing new coming in. I can tell you right now, our costs are continuing to go up. That's 25% of our revenue. I'm gonna stop it, I mean, I got lots of stuff going. I always say, if you, you know, call, make an appointment, you know, I'll sit down and spend as much time as you want to spend. I will go through point for point, bit by bit, business idea, business idea. But as we go through the capital plan, it's gonna be one of those things that this, six of these people right now are gonna have to make some very hard decisions in the next 18 months based upon projects we wanna do, how we wanna do them, and where we're gonna get the funds because we continue to get beat out. Here's a great example, just, I mean, I gotta tell you one more quick one. Chief Shaw, she just told me, I'm gonna lose one of our great, one of our good kid cops that we've had on. Mike's been here for how many years? Four?
Five.
Five, he's been here five years, I swear on memory when he first came on.